Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Favella.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Burkle.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Cole. Mayor Protem Chipman.
Here. I will take a motion to excuse Mayor Cole.
A motion to excuse Mayor Cole and acknowledge that Counselor Hamilton is virtual tonight.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes. Mr. Stewart, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight, which I'm going to read to you. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness for breast cancer, increase screenings, and provide critical support for patients and survivors. Since 1989, increased awareness has helped reduce breast cancer deaths in the United States by 44%. And whereas significant dates during the month include October 10th, World Mental Health Day, October 17th, National Mammography Day, and October 17th to 23rd, Men's Breast Cancer Awareness Week. And whereas Pink Lemonade Project, which is a longtime city partner, works to educate, empower, and support communities and individuals affected by breast cancer with education, mammography, and treatment access programs, financial assistance, support groups, and community connections. And whereas the Ridgefield Police Department is participating in the Pink Patch Project for the eighth consecutive year, the project centers on vibrant pink versions of the department's uniform patch and sales of pink patches to raise funds for the Pink Lemonade Project. And whereas city staff are expanding the awareness project with pink ribbons on the entire fleet by distributing magnets and wearing pink each Wednesday. Now therefore, I, Judy Chipman, Mayor Protem of the City of Ridgefield, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all the residents to recognize the seriousness of this condition, show support for patients who have battled the disease, and urge all women to get a cancer screening dated this day, October, the ninth day of October 2025. And I'm going to ask Don Stos if he would come forward to receive this proclamation. And Don, you might have a few words to say? Okay, go right ahead. Yes, and then we want to take a picture with you after you say a few words.
Mayor Protem, esteemed council, city staff, interested citizens, good evening. My name is Don Stos and I'm a senior member of Pink Lemonade Project Board of Governors. As Mayor Protem mentioned, breast cancer is still a major killer of women, primarily women in the United States. One out of every seven women could be diagnosed with breast cancer. The national average is one out of eight. So southwest Washington leads the country in a higher rate. Breast cancer does not discriminate. Women of all ages these days are being diagnosed with breast cancer. And of course, men can be diagnosed with breast cancer as well. The sad thing about men is the rate of not being able to really help those folks is pretty bad. And that reason is because we're tough, we're strong, we get that lump in our breast and it'll go away, we'll worry about it later. Five or six months later, it's too late. And so the chances of helping men is pretty grim. In 2024, Pink Lemonade Project helped over 4,400 women that have been diagnosed with breast cancer navigate their journey to wellness. We would have done more, but we just didn't have enough funds to do that. Like the City of Ridgefield, we've partnered with a whole lot of organizations and more organizations are jumping onboard every year. And so it gets better and better all the time, and we're able to help more as time goes by. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out the pink cart. And I've given each one of you a pink cart. I know there are a lot of folks in Ridgefield that already have pink carts. I'd like you to join us and turn City of Ridgefield pink with our pink carts. Also, one of the biggest fundraisers that we have throughout the year is Girl Friends Run, which is coming up this Sunday. And if you'd like to jump onboard and register to do that, it's not too late. I know that Chief is going to be there. And I know that Councilmember Hamilton's family is a yearly event. I know that we'll see them down there as well. So with that, I just want to thank you. I want to thank Chief Dorit. We'll talk about that a little bit more when she does the Pink Patch presentation. But it's so wonderful to have the City of Ridgefield that has put together that Pink Patch program and led the entire nation with that fundraising event. So thank you so much.
If you'll stay up. Chief Dorit, if you'll come up and have a picture with us and Officer Debiak that created the tattoo. Now it's time for public comment. So anyone wishing to address the city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time to the podium or use the raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press nine for raise hand and press six to mute or unmute. Please state your name and limit your comment to three minutes.
My name is Michael Jennings. Thank you for the more carefully, more careful logic and better organization than the U.S. government.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Ann Bolger, and I'm here on behalf of the Ridgefield Garden Club. I know I'm speaking to kindred spirits today, people who already value wildlife, open spaces, and the environment we share. Among us are environmentalists, hunters, gardeners, and good neighbors, all united by our love for the same thing, landscapes alive with plants, insects, birds, healthy soil, and clean water. Ridgefield is a unique place, a town in transition where the roots of our old community are meeting the energy of a new one. We are small-town USA, and that's becoming a rare and precious commodity. Protecting our natural spaces and pollinators is one way we can preserve the character and quality of life that make Ridgefield special. The Garden Club is proud to have introduced the B-City USA initiative to our city. Just as we care for the hanging baskets downtown, we are eager to contribute our volunteer energy to the events and initiatives that B-City USA will bring. Please stay connected with us. We are eager to work alongside you to celebrate and protect Ridgefield's pollinators and wild spaces, and thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give a public comment tonight? Julie, is there anyone online?
Not seen anyone online.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next we have on the agenda, the, okay, we have a couple presentations tonight. The first one is the Pink Patch presentation. I'm sorry, I skipped something. Okay. This, hmm?
You're good. You're good. It's the one.
Okay. Approval to submit, oh, we already did this, we covered this. Okay. We have a couple presentations tonight. The first one is the Pink Patch presentation. I'm sorry. Kathy Dorit, if you'd please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and members of the community. It's my pleasure tonight to come, I can't believe it's October already, it just seems like it got here so quickly, but it's my pleasure to come before you tonight to talk about the Pink Patch project that we do. I'm going to be pretty short because I actually have a special guest that's going to do a little bit more talking tonight than I am. I'm excited to announce that this is our eighth year, but I'm also very excited to announce the Kallits tribe now has gotten onboard, and they also are going to have pink patches this year. So that means just the Vancouver Police Department, they're still on my list, so I'm coming for them. So hopefully, they're listening. It's my honor tonight, I've been primarily the designer for the Pink Patch for the last eight years, although the year before last, Danny Bowerman, one of our employees, our records employees at the police department, designed that patch. And she designed a beautiful patch, and I want to give a shout out to her because she really stepped up year before last to do that. But this year, Officer Debiak, it's my pleasure tonight to present Officer Kalen Debiak, the designer of the 2025 Pink Patch, and I'm going to let you tell her how we got here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, and community partners. My name is Officer Debiak, and I am proud to represent the Ridgefield Police Department. I'm here today to present our 2025 Breast Cancer Awareness Patch Design, a project that this year I had the honor of creating. This design was a labor of love for me, blending creativity, community, and purpose. And each element of the patch was chosen carefully to represent not only the fight against breast cancer, but also the character and natural beauty of Ridgefield itself. The pink sky and background symbolizes our support for breast cancer awareness and the ongoing fight for the cure. The evergreen trees and the mountains reflect Ridgefield's natural beauty. The blue water and walking trails represent the wetlands and the waterways that define our region, symbolizing renewal and connection to the environment. And the pink ribbon serves as the universal emblem of breast cancer awareness, honoring survivors, fighters, and those that we have lost. And finally, the police shape, which signifies our department's commitment to community service and supporting causes that reach beyond the badge. And of course, Cardy's front and center. Every October, our department proudly wears these patches, and each year, we hear stories from residents, survivors, and family members who feel seen, supported, and honored. The 2025 design continues the tradition in celebrating who we are as a community, compassionate, resilient, and united. Thank you for the opportunity to share this project and continue the tradition that means so much to us. I hope this design inspires pride, not only in our department, but also in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
How amazing was that?
Yes, that was amazing.
Very proud. I just also wanted to thank Pink Lemonade Project for being here again. You guys have been amazing supporters and partners in this adventure with us. I just really appreciate everything that you do in the connection and relationship that we've established, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Dorit, if you want to stay here, the next thing on the schedule is the police department body camera presentation. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, once again, council members and members of the community. So I'm coming back to you tonight to kind of come back where I said about a year ago that we would report to you how our body worn camera and in-vehicle camera project is going. So back in January 9th of 2025, we came before the city council to present our body worn camera policy and our in-vehicle camera policies. And we shortly after that then entered into a 10-year contract with Axon to purchase their cameras and Taser 10s and the in-vehicle cameras. So we, I'm going to give you a little bit of a timeline of what that project entailed. When we entered into the contract in January of 2025, we expected that we would take delivery of the cameras and the Tasers and the in-vehicle cameras in about March, and that we would start the project then. There were some delays, Axon wasn't able to give us the cameras at that point, and it did take some time for us finally to get all the equipment. In April of 2025, we did start some of our training, we were able to get our Taser instructor trained, and then we did some virtual reality training with the Taser 10s and got that going. And then it was June when equipment finally started to come in. So it was a long delay between March and June, but during that time, we were able to utilize some assistance from the Clark County Sheriff's Department. They were fantastic, and they loaned us their head body worn camera expert. So he was able to come in and work with my staff to get all the software systems in place and get prepared for that hardware to come in. So they went into the, they established the evidence.com programs, they were able to go in and assign all the roles and permissions, get our officers all set up in evidence.com, do a lot of that groundwork. And it saved us just a significant number of hours having him come in from the Sheriff's Department to help us out. We were able to learn from a lot of the things that they had kind of made mistakes with, but were able to guide us around, so we didn't have to go through that. In July of 25, 2025, we finally got full delivery of all our equipment. So it was quite a long delay between March and July, but I think that it was time well spent making sure that we had the infrastructure set up really nicely. On August 25th and 29th, we actually rolled out our body worn cameras to our first group of officers. The first training was on the 25th, all the officers were taught how to work the cameras, how they're to be deployed when they're out in the field, and how to upload the data and digital stuff that comes from those cameras. We then had the second training on the 29th, and as of that, the day following that, all of our officers in our department now are carrying and wearing body worn cameras. September 18th is going to be the, September 18th was the first day that we had the training for the Taser 10s, because as part of this program with Axon, we purchased not only the body worn cameras, but the Taser 10s and then the in-vehicle cameras. So the Taser 10 was an adjustment for us from our older system of Tasers that we used. That's one of our less lethal tools that we carry on us. So it was Officer Koblenz, who is our Taser instructor, spent the whole day on September 18th getting our officers all trained on the proper use of that device. And then again, we'll train the other half of our department on the 16th of October, and then the entire department will be ready to go with the Taser 10s. And then just here recently, on October 3rd and 4th, we installed, we had Axon and their vendor Systems for Public Safety come down to the police department, and we have all the in-camera installed in every one of our patrol vehicles. So we now have all those cameras in all of the patrol vehicles. They're not live yet, and we're not using them yet because we still have to do some training, and then we have to set up the system and be ready to go live. But I anticipate probably by the end of the month, we'll be going live with that. We're going to do something a little unique tonight, so bear with me while there's a lot of movement going on. We're going to try to do a demo for you. And I'll get to that here in just a minute, but that's what they're trying to set up, is to get ready to do a demo for you. So how these cameras work, you'll see them, they're all positioned on the center of the officers, like the one that I have here on me, they're right at our chest level, that is consistent for all the officers, and that's to give us a point of view that is common for every officer, center here. These cameras are really fast charging, we can, they'll last the whole shift, but if we need to, we can dock them at the PD and they'll charge up quickly. The cameras, all the data from the cameras get sent through the Wi-Fi to the cloud, which is evidence.com, that's where we do all our storage. The officers, during the day when they're at the office writing reports, they can dock their camera, take it off their vest, and they can dock it into the system, that will then automatically upload the data to the cloud. All of that is secure storage, there's, people aren't able to access that, it's just for our department. As far as the camera, once it's on them, they have the ability to dim it, there's typically, if I'm recording, there'd be a red light right here, but they can dim that down a little bit, so if they're in a tactical situation, they don't have to have that on. There's also a little beeping indicator if the camera's on that will beep and let them know that it's on. As far as activation, it's really quite simple. So the camera is right here on the front, they just tap this two times and the camera's active. They can actually see when they look down at it, there's a digital screen on the top that you can't see from your vantage point, but it will tell them the camera is recording or it's not recording, it's in what they call sleep mode or standby mode. The camera is on the officers all the time from when they come to work, they're to have it on them. Once they're in, actually at work, the camera is in, it should be on, turned on and actually ready to function, but it is not recording at that time. For example, let's say we're sitting here and somebody right now walked up to me and hit me, and we had an assault, even though my camera's not on, we could go into the camera, we could pull up the data, and it has a buffering system that even though the camera wasn't on, it is audio, or video recording for 30 seconds prior to being activated. So the system is smart enough, it can go back and show what happened in this room for 30 seconds prior to when my camera was turned on. There's no audio, but there is that. Where that comes into play and where it's been helpful is, for example, a vehicle collision, where an officer may have been driving and a car T-bones them, and they didn't have their camera on because they were just out driving around, but they were able to go back in and retrieve that data and show what that officer was seeing or doing prior to that collision. So that's what they call the 30-second buffering mode. When to record, so our officers, anytime they're engaged in any type of police activity, they're going to be recording. If they're at Rosar's just talking to you about apples, probably not recording. But if they're out at your house for a neighbor disturbance, or if they're out on a traffic stop with you, their cameras will be recording. There are two situations when officers have to announce that they are recording. One of them is when they stop you on a traffic stop, they have to tell you, you're being both audio and video recorded. The other is if they have you in custody and they're going to question you or interrogate you, that's called a custodial interrogation. So they have to have, have given you that notice. One of the things that we require is because now that we have body worn cameras and in-vehicle cameras, anytime that they create a document or a ticket or anything, all of that has to have a notation on it that it has, that there was a body worn camera involved. So that's a reference. When the officers are out in the field, let's say I go to your house and we're investigating something, and you're telling me something that's very critical, and I can see that this is going to pay, is going to pay dividends, what you're saying, I actually have a feature on my camera that I can tap it, and it will tell me, it'll flag that. So when I go back to the office to write the report, I can pull that up and look for where I flagged it, and I can do that for a variety of things. One of the things we're going to do is, it's called a watch-me feature. So we don't normally have access, but for today, for this demonstration, this is a watch-me feature. We're able to live stream from the camera right now. So this is Officer Debiak out in the street, and this is the vantage point that she is seeing from, you guys are seeing off of her camera footage. So this is everything that she's looking at out there. So as you can see, it has a pretty wide range, pretty good image, so. That watch-me feature is not something that we access, there's very, very strict restrictions as to when we can use that function, but the reason we're doing it today is just for you to be able to see what that viewpoint is, what that camera is seeing, and what that'll show you when we see the videos and we play those. The other thing that's kind of important is as we get the, there are certain things that trigger those cameras to come on automatically, so it doesn't involve the officer turning it on. In this case, when she lifts just either her Taser holster or her weapon, her firearm, even slightly out of the holster, that will automatically activate the camera. Additionally, if they're in their patrol car and they flip on their overheads to stop you, that'll automatically activate the camera. So those are automatic trigger points. And then like I said earlier, at the end of their shift, they can dock their camera, it all goes up to the cloud, that's all safely secured and stored. If they want to, they can do it throughout the day. And then the other thing that the officers can do is, when they go to write their reports, they can review their body worn camera footage, and they can use that for recollection for their reports. The reports cannot be viewed by anybody else unless it meets one of the reasons outlined in the policy. Officers can review their reports, other officers, if there's a police reason, need to review their reports because they were on that call, but we don't go through and just randomly search through their videos. So, and then everything that we do video-wise, that gets stored, if the public requests it, we have a redaction team, which is our records unit, that they'll go in and make sure that they redact anything that's confidential, and that goes out. If it's prosecutors requesting it, then that goes out without redaction. So yeah, that's pretty much where we are with body worn cameras. I just wanted to kind of bring an update back to you, we'll get more when we get the vehicle cameras up and running, we'll give you another update, but this is just the first of a couple. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Favella.
Thank you, Chief. This is really exciting for our department. You mentioned the recording 30 seconds before the camera's activated, but during a physical altercation, if the camera is accidentally turned off, how is that, does it, is there an after time that it will continue to record, like a 30 seconds after it's turned off, or how does that work?
No, my understanding is the buffering is the before, there's not an after. But recently, we had the incident up at the weigh scales where the person fell on top of the officer and it shut the camera off.
Correct.
One of the things, one of the features about these cameras is we have a lot of ways that we can set standards on them. And so what we have done as an agency is you can't just push on this anymore to shut it off, which is what that deputy had. This now requires that you hold it for a period of time, and there's a button on the side, so it's a dual kind of movement that you have to do. So the weight of somebody alone isn't going to turn that off.
The, that weigh station incident was, exactly what, yeah. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Other counselors, do you have any questions? Mr. Counsel Burkle.
If a citizen required a copy or of the camera action that was taken, will there be a charge for that?
If the citizen was involved in the incident, then no, there's not. But if they are in no way involved in that incident and they request a copy of that, there is an amount that they would have to pay for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton, did you have a question?
No, I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the questions, but none over here.
Okay, how about you? Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I was just curious about, when you mentioned the records, you know, and the redactions, what kind of administrative time would that take? I mean, I realize that like the length of the tape is obviously going to be a huge determining factor, but is that a relatively easy process, or is that a really time-consuming process if it was requested?
I think right now, early in the process, we're finding out that it's fairly time-consuming, just because I think there is some element of a learning curve there, it's a new system to us, it's a new process, so we are dealing with that. But I think over time, hopefully, we're going to get better adept at it and have, there's some tools that we can use to help with that, there's some auto-redaction that the system itself does. Axon is pretty amazing, what this program all can do, and we just don't, haven't discovered all that yet. So it is fairly time-consuming right now, we're hoping to improve that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess we don't have any other questions. Thank you so much, Chief, sounds like a great addition to our tools for our police. So the next presentation we have is the workforce as economic infrastructure, what it means for the City of Ridgefield. And we have Darcy Hoffman, Director of Business Services, and Nolan Yoz Gonzalez, Associate Director of Programs for the workforce of southwest Washington. Darcy, thank you.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mayor Protem, Counselor, thank you so much for having us tonight. I don't know how we're going to follow the last two, but. But we're going to try and keep it really concise and super relevant to the City of Ridgefield. Nolan is presenting with me this evening, when we get to his slides, he'll come up and he can introduce himself at that time. I'm Darcy Hoffman, I'm the Director of Business Services at Workforce Southwest Washington, or WSW. We are one of 12 nonprofit workforce boards in the state of Washington. We serve Clark, Kallits, and Waukeaham counties here in southwest Washington, and we partner with our stakeholder agencies from higher education, community-based organizations, labor, economic development, government, to leverage and invest in workforce development. So really, our overarching goal is that we want to make sure that residents in our community have access to good quality jobs, and that businesses have access to the talent that they need. So I oversee our business services team, that's really critical to our organization. Everything we do in terms of program development and preparing people jobs, or for jobs, is all based on employer demand, and I will get a little more into that in a moment. Did we lose slides? Did we lose slides? Well, that's okay. I'll just keep talking while you find slides. In the next slide, I'm going to tell you probably some things you already know about the city of Ridgefield because you live here. And with that, I also wanted to share because this is kind of fun. Every couple of years, our organization tries to get out to all of our cities and all of our counties in Southwest Washington and just remind you of who we are, what we do, how we can support you and where we think that maybe your strategic goals and our strategic goals align where maybe our work is supportive, really supportive of the work that you're doing. But this one's kind of fun because both Nolan and I, and actually Lynn is also with WSW just in the audience tonight, we all three live here in Ridgefield. So this one's kind of special because this is home to us. And I can just say from my experience, I've I'm from Southwest Washington. I've lived in all kinds of Southwest Washington cities, including in Calhoun County. I've been in Ridgefield for about five years now, and I have to say that it's by far my favorite place I have ever lived. Yeah, I can't say enough of good things about about Ridgefield. It's just been really great for me here. So with that, whenever we find the slides, here's things you probably already know about Ridgefield, some of the the strengths in in terms of like the ability for economic growth, you know, the location, your transportation access, the quality of life that I just referenced. You actually have available land for development, the waterfront redevelopment project, all of the population growth in the city that's driving the demand for housing and services and healthcare and education. Those are all really positive things. So before we came here today, I wanted to look just specifically at the city of Ridgefield because we don't normally as an organization look quite that granularly at just a city. We're usually looking at a region. But I looked at our our largest industries by employment concentration. So what you have right now in Ridgefield, oh, good, they're back up. You can see wholesale trade, construction, transportation, manufacturing, and then other services. And I included the average wages in those industries and that's specific to Ridgefield. So those wages might not look the same if you looked at them in another city. And I wanted to highlight that because I think that's really promising and really strong. A lot of these industries are paying very livable wages, which is something that we care deeply about at WSW. This is what we want for people in our community. So I just I think there's a lot of alignment here and I think Ridgefield has done a really nice job so far with the industries that that you have in in the city that you're retaining here in the city, very well aligned with us. Back in 2021, our organization developed and launched a job quality initiative and framework. And as part of that work, we talked to countless community members, organizations, really to dig in and find out what was important to people in terms of the elements that make up a quality job. So first and foremost, it's obviously wages. People need to be able to support themselves and their families. But it it goes down into, you know, people want a place to work where the working conditions are safe. They want predictable hours and scheduling, comprehensive benefits. They want jobs with opportunities for training and advancement. And I think so far what we have going on in Ridgefield really lends itself to some of those things, which aligns with a lot of the work that we're doing. And next, if we can go to the next slide, I wanted to talk specifically about the Envision Ridgefield 2045 Plan, which I realize is in draft form. But we went through some of the policies that are in draft form and I just pulled out a couple that resonate with us, with me, and I think we have a lot of alignment and maybe showcase some of that. So the three that you see on your screen, the first one's around pursuing an economic development, an economic development strategy aimed at above average wage, high growth sectors. I'll say more about that in a moment. Targeting high property value businesses like manufacturing, utility and medical facilities. And then also keeping up on regional and local economic trends to be on the lookout for existing or emerging employment clusters to attract to Ridgefield. So I want to speak to some of the some of the ways that I think this work really aligns with the work that's important to us and some of the work that we're already doing. So back in 2007, our organization formed a collaborative with the Workforce Board that covers the Portland Metro region and also Clackamas County. So that's we view Southwest Washington, Southwest Washington, Portland Metro, that's our labor market. People live and work all over that region. So it's important to us that we are very aligned with those two workforce boards in particular to make sure that we're one preparing workers in a way that meets the needs of all of the employers in our in our region. So we've been working together ever since then to help streamline public investments, develop workforce programs, guide economic development, all of those good things. We also focus have very similar target sectors to the ones that Ridgefield is proposing and we have for many years. We reevaluate them every few years just to make sure that we're on on track and we're still focusing in the right area. So for us right now, we're at advanced manufacturing, construction, clean energy and healthcare. I just completely lost my train of thought about what I wanted to say about that. Oh, we choose those industries likely for the very same reason you choose those industries. High growth, high demand, good earning potential, lots of opportunity for people to grow in their careers and and progress. So we focus on very similar industries. Another one that could be a potential opportunity for Ridgefield to think about, because I did see in some of your draft policies, something around promoting or supporting like the remote work opportunities for people. And I think there's a lot of ways, a lot of strategies that can help support that, you know, coworking spaces and meetup groups and other ways to help keep people connected in a community when they are working remotely, but potentially also looking at recruiting more of the professional scientific and technical type companies. So those are, you know, your legal services, your consultants, your designers, your computer occupations. That could also be something to look at. Not only are they the industries that have the the highest wage earners, but I think there's probably also good opportunities in those industries for remote work. So that could be something to think about and we would be happy to have more conversations with you about that. I'm sure CRDC would as well. And then the last thing that I want to talk about before I turn it over to Nolan is the clean energy sector. And I'm going to be a little bit more brief here than I originally planned on, just in the interest of time. Clean energy is a new sector for our workforce board and it's a tricky one. And I know you have it named in some of your drafts, sustainable jobs, green jobs. I think we're probably talking about the same thing. It's tricky because it's not actually an industry in in what you would think of manufacturing or healthcare. There's no industry code for clean energy or green jobs. So we staff a researcher at one of our workforce boards who helped us dig into what jobs make up the the clean energy industry. And we created a definition for the clean energy industry and we have a whole list of occupations that we believe have the the most critical role in the transition to clean energy. So that is another thing I want to offer up. We've already done a lot of the legwork to kind of define what that looks like and what those jobs might look like, what those companies might look like. I think that could be another potential way we could partner. We've done a lot of the work, happy to share it. And then the last thing, this is brand, brand new. I probably shouldn't even talk about it because I only know enough just to be dangerous. But I think it's really relevant based on some of the the draft goals and priorities that I saw from you all. And that is the mass timber industry. So there is the Pacific Northwest Mass Timber Tech Hub, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. But back in 2023, the Economic Development Administration designated 31 tech hubs around the nation, of which the Pacific Northwest was awarded one for mass timber. And basically what the so the program invest directly in regions who've demonstrated that they have the assets, resources, capacity and potential to transform into globally competitive innovation centers within about the next 10 years while capitalizing on quality jobs for American workers. So it's basically the government's endorsement, recognizing our region and supporting our our efforts in this space, in the mass timber space. Our partners with the workforce boards in Portland were originally involved in the Pacific Northwest Mass Timber Tech Hub. And now they're in a place, so it encompasses all of Washington and all of Oregon. They're in a place now where I think they're potentially up for some pretty significant additional federal investment in that program and really looking to grow the work beyond just kind of what they've been doing in the immediate Portland Metro area. So for us, I think that obviously looks like workforce development and making sure we're preparing people for careers in mass timber. But for Ridgefield, it may look like economic development and positioning Ridgefield potentially as a place where mass timber companies could locate. And I think, you know, it ticks a couple of boxes in terms of clean energy and emerging industries. So that's a journey. I'm happy to bring you all on with me as we learn more and find out how we might be in a place to support and to bring those jobs here to to Southwest Washington. So that was the last thing I wanted to flag for you. The next slide I'm going to skip because it was intended just to be a very high level overview of our investment strategy and how our funding works. But I think a better way to do that is for me just to turn it over to Nolan, who will just tell you about some of our programs so they're not so ambiguous.
Thank you. Thank you. That's great.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us tonight. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to connect. We could have talked about any number of programs based out of our workforce centers or out of Next Success, our Opportunity Youth Center. But when we were talking about this presentation, Darcy and I really thought this was a great opportunity to showcase a partnership between us, Columbia River Economic Development Council and WU Vancouver. We have been partnering since 2020 on the Future Leaders Project. Really bad year to launch an internship program that's summer based, but we did get three interns placed in virtual internships that summer and got off to a slow but steady start from there. We've been operating this program as a partnership over the course of the last six years. And over the last six summers, we've had 91 WU Vancouver students complete internships with 41 different local businesses, primarily in Clark County, but a couple also in Calhoun County. With 2,700 students on the WU Vancouver campus and over 40% of them being first generation students that are often not sure kind of what comes next, not necessarily well connected yet in the community, it's a priority for us to make sure that they have a solid sense of a direction as well as have the opportunity to gain paid work experience and build their network prior to graduating because we know around 90, 95% of these young adults stay right here in our community. And that's the talent we want to keep here. If we could go to the next slide, this next slide shows just kind of program growth year over year. Like I mentioned, off to a slow start initially, but the last few summers, we have been growing by leaps and bounds. The majority of these internship opportunities are employer sponsored where the companies that are participating in the program are not only committing to providing a meaningful internship experience. We're not talking getting coffee and filing paperwork. We're talking about hands on projects, but also the opportunity to connect with leaders, shadow leaders, engage with folks across the organization, get out in the community. That's how they're building that social capital and really helping them explore the different possibilities that exist right here in Southwest Washington. So many of these opportunities have been employer sponsored, but thankfully, over the course of the last few years, we've also been able to really expand the program thanks to the generous support of the JP Morgan Chase Foundation. We have received three summer youth employment program focused grants that have allowed us to provide mini grants to local nonprofits and small BIPOC owned, woman owned, LGBTQ plus owned and veteran owned businesses so that they can host interns at no cost to them. We actually just opened that grant application for summer 2026 with.
If you know anybody.
Yeah, if you know anyone. We are definitely looking to to fund the 16 more of those mini grants for summer 2026 and hoping to be closer to 40 internships this next year. I know talking about this program, high level can kind of still make it seem a little bit abstract. So if we can go to the next slide, I think a great example of an internship opportunity that we saw be a huge growth opportunity, both for the company and for the young adult that was participating existed with Summit Truck Body. I know they're in Ridgefield technically by zip code and not in city limits, but I still thought this was a good example because Lucas Rogers, Mechanical Engineering Major at WU Vancouver, summer of his junior year, preparing to go into senior year, got to join Summit Truck Body and help them design and develop a prototype for a new landscaping truck that they're hoping to launch. And he did such an amazing job that they not only were able to get all the way through to the prototype, but they already have customers lined up. And they're launching and preparing to sell that. So that's Lucas working on the truck and in the office there at Summit Truck Body. And I think this is just one of many success stories that we heard from this last summer. Another one that I still am so excited about is there's a young woman named Emma Tao that interned with Columbia Credit Union. She was one of three interns they hired this year. She was able to work with their IT team in an information security analyst internship role. And she did such an amazing job, even though she's a junior, they've already hired her full time and they're working around her academic schedule so she can complete her senior year. These are the type of students and talent we have in our community. This is why we're investing in this sort of program and being so committed to the work because we are seeing this payoff for businesses. We're seeing this payoff for the young adults and those talented individuals are staying in our community with the connections that they're making. I think, cool. I think the last piece is as we we kind of close things out and then, of course, Darcy and I are available if there's any questions, is we just really again wanted this opportunity tonight to talk a little bit about the work that's happening at Workforce Southwest Washington, the work that we're doing to try and reduce unemployment, to help get folks connected to good paying jobs, support the emerging workforce and really grow our local economy because we know how challenging it can be for folks when they're out of work, especially during tough economic times when the rising cost of everything keeps going up and up. So we really do see there being opportunities to partner with the city. We would love to have you all host a Future Leaders intern if it helps. City of Vancouver hosted two last year, just saying. But beyond that, I think there are some other ways that we can partner as well. If we could go to the last, the next to last slide. One thing would be, of course, promoting the different opportunities that exist, sharing information with the community about upcoming hiring events, the resources that are available through Worksource, Next Success, and some of our other programs, all of which we can definitely share. Also ways that we can collaborate, we would love to have folks that are interested connected with not only our committees that are associated with our Board of Directors, but we have advisory committees as well. And there's ways to get plugged in too when we're applying for funding. We're always applying for grants, whether that be federal, state or private funding. And so collaborating on those sorts of things that can help bring new money and new programs that will continue to develop the workforce in our region, would love to have the way the ability to collaborate on any of those sorts of opportunities. Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. With that, I guess, any questions?
Ryan? Excuse me. Counselor Davis?
Oh, thank you. Well, Nolan, congratulations on the trajectory of that program. That's that's really cool to see, especially having started during the pandemic, to see the growth that you've had. That's that's a big accomplishment and it's that's important work. I know that a lot of, you know, those college age kids, they go in and they're like, I don't know what this is going to look like on the other side. You know what I mean? What the job market's going to look like. So that is really important work. Shifting gears to something that Darcy talked about, you picked out that focus that we have in our growth plan related to remote work.
Yeah.
And some of those things, and that's something I've tried to kind of focus on. And I would just say, I'd love to open that door to to dive in a little bit deeper and collaborate how we can on, you know, what we can be doing as a city to make, you know, just our our city a place where where that's welcome and they have the resources they need to be successful, not just professionally, but personally as well. So I think that'd be a a great opportunity.
Let's do it.
Cool.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
That was so informative. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Megan. Okay. Counselor Hamilton.
Hi, thank you. I just had a couple of funding and impact questions that I wrote down. Since so much of your funding comes from federal and state sources, how do you prioritize which industries or areas receive support if funding becomes more limited?
I mean, I can speak to industries. So we really only focus on advanced manufacturing, construction, clean energy and healthcare. We will use our dollars to support any company in any industry. We do have some requirements that that companies need to meet in order to access those dollars. And that's really around self. to access those dollars and that's really around self-sufficiency wages post-training, we have to have that, it also has to be an opportunity that offers benefits at a minimum healthcare and paid time off like for vacation, not mandatory sick leave that everyone is required to provide, so those are two kind of things that we require for employers to be able to access our dollars and then on the participant side, I don't know how we
yeah, with job seekers like Darcy mentioned, not only are we trying to get them into those high-growth in-demand sectors but we also have an occupations in-demand list that we update annually or biannually at least and that includes a number of occupations that we know have a growth trajectory that's positive that if participants go through that training it's gonna lead to a positive outcome typically and with those, I mean you it's everything across multiple industries, I mean accountants for example is on that list because it is a sector that is still needing folks, so we do look closely at that labor market data and try and help get participants aligned with occupations that will lead to that self-sufficiency wage but also that we know that there's that growth especially in the longer term so that that it's not a short-term training that leads to the next potential layoff and and that's a great question about funding, I think just in general, on average our normal budget when it's normal, which this year it's not quite normal, is around 65% federal funding, I would say 35, 30, 35% state and then maybe sometimes it's that in that 5% that's not state that we have some private funding, it's not a significant amount, partially because local workforce development boards are often looked at more so like an investor than like a private foundation or a local nonprofit that's truly a charity organization, so it's a little harder for us to secure funding a lot of times from a private foundation, so it's definitely a mix of state and federal but our budget is down about 45% compared to last year and that's due to both some sunsetting of some federal grants and then also the state's budget deficit this year.
Thank you, I did have a second question, we're doing a ton of stuff with like, not a ton of stuff, we're starting a youth commission and we've been very youth-focused, so I was just got to thinking if we're investing in like workforce programs like apprenticeships or youth trainings, is there a way we can leverage or match those funds through you guys?
Yes, please, that's exactly what we should be doing, yeah absolutely, so our funding can help support all of those same things, so we should definitely talk about how we could do more together to be able to to help more people, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Wells has a question here.
I have one question and that was on your mass timber resources, what are the sideboards on that, I mean can you give a real short synopsis of what?
Like the definition of of mass timber?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I gotta look at my notes to do it, but it's basically, it's an engineered wood product where they're basically fastening together small pieces of wood to make huge pieces of structural building materials and in many cases it can replace things like steel and concrete which are you know heavy carbon contributors, so that's really it in a nutshell, it's also manufactured and it's prefabbed, so I mean we're talking about a lot of manufacturing jobs that then they do turn into building jobs whenever you're building whatever the thing is, it just looks a little bit different because you're bringing out these prefabbed big pieces of structural building material, basically.
Yeah, and years passed, everything was a wood timber and then they had turned it around and went glue lamps, which was putting it together
Yes, glue lamp.
And then you got strand board, strand board evolution from plywood to strand board and that, so I understand now what you're talking about, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I was associated with the timber industry for 44 years.
Oh, okay, so you know more than I do, I'm just learning about this, I think a lot of people are just learning about it, so.
That was an interesting turn.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much, okay, moving on, our last presentation tonight is about Bee City USA process, Corey Crownheart, our park manager.
Thank you Mayor Protem and council and it's always a pleasure to be up here talking about parks, recreation and of course our wonderful community partnerships, so let's talk a little bit about the Bee City USA program and what the process requirements and considerations look like, so tonight I'll be introducing to you the Bee City USA program and walking you through what it is, why it matters and what participation could look like for the city of Ridgefield, this is an overview only and we're not asking for any action tonight but we do want your feedback, think of this as a chance to learn about the opportunities and to ask questions, so let's start with the basics, what is Bee City, Bee City USA is a national recognition program run by the Xerxes Society for Invertebrate Conservation, their focus is on pollinator protection especially native bees, there's many programs like this across the country that help designate cities as different, having different superlatives, so having a bird recognition for a city as being a city that is welcoming to birds nesting in their communities or a cycling community that allows the city to be a bike city USA and many of these programs have all sorts of metrics and resolutions and information that encourage the city to implement to encourage the you know specific mission that that particular program has, now for the Bee City it's not just a title, it recognizes communities that are actively supporting pollinator health through habitat creation, conscious use of pesticides and educating the public, so what could this look like for the city of Ridgefield, there are real benefits to the community, schools and civic groups can use this as an educational platform to help enhance those things that are happening inside the classroom outside and the rest of the community, it also opens the doors for more partnerships which the city of Ridgefield has many, with nonprofits, neighborhood associations, HOAs and others, these collaborations strengthen our community connection to our outdoor spaces, importantly it could bolster Ridgefield's reputation as a sustainability leader which aligns with the environmental values that this council has espoused, it's a marketing tool as well which helps promote the city's the city's strong brand, from an ecological standpoint it directly supports biodiversity, helping protect pollinators that are critical for food, seed production and ensuring ecosystems remain resilient, if you decided to pursue a designation like this, what would that process look like, because there is some work involved, so the process is fairly straightforward if a city were to participate, first the city would need to designate a liaison, this could be a staff person with the city, maybe city manager, steward could serve as this individual or someone else in the city could do that as well, next you'd have to form or designate a pollinator committee, this doesn't have to be complicated or a new group, it could be a subcommittee or advisory body to council, Parks Board could potentially serve as that body, council would also have to adopt a resolution, there's a draft copy of this on Bee City USA's website that we can provide for council if that's a direction that you want to go, and then there's a simple application and a $200 annual fee, to maintain certification the city must hold at least one annual educational event and submit an annual progress report, of course adoption is the only is only the beginning of this, there's also the ongoing work of maintaining certification, fortunately many of the things I just talked about are things that we already do, for example hosting one annual education outreach event, we have many city events that could potentially service this, our Spring Festival in particular may be a good candidate for that, we'd also put up signage across the city to help share that this is something that the city is committed to using our website and our communications platform to help share that message, on the habitat and maintenance side, Ridgefield already has pollinator-friendly planting requirements in our engineering standards and our operations and maintenance crews already use integrated pest management practices in all of our parks, trails and outdoor spaces, so this isn't about reinventing the wheel, it's more about formalizing and celebrating what we're already doing, let's look at what some comparable cities in the area have done because we would definitely not be the first, Vancouver just became a Bee City this last year, they hosted a pollinator festival and utilized collaborations with nonprofits and local schools, Hillsborough has integrated pollinator-friendly policies into their city planning and park maintenance policies since 2019, Eugene went even further expanding native habitats across parks and open spaces starting back in 2018, these case studies show that the designation is achievable and communities have been creative in how they meet the requirements, so with that overview I'd like to turn it back over to you Mayor Protem and council for discussion, questions or comments, with that I will preempt your first question, while the city could be designated a Bee City, it does not prevent us from being an A-plus city.
Okay, council, okay, go ahead, councillor Favella.
Yes, I appreciate this presentation, it will come as no surprise to anybody, I'm not an outdoorsy kind of girl, I don't know anything about plants or whatever, are we bringing bees into Ridgefield to have more because what is happening kindly?
This isn't about bringing in or having, this wouldn't be about bringing in bee hives, this would be more about ensuring that we are putting forward policies that are encouraging native plants within our open spaces, within our parks and even encouraging residents to bring those spaces into their areas as well, while it is designated as a Bee City designation, it's not just about bees, just bees are the things that people are excited about, there's all sorts of invertebrates and bugs that help fuel our ecosystem and so by utilizing more native plants in our spaces we are helping maintain that healthy ecosystem throughout Ridgefield especially as we're continuing to grow.
Awesome, I love that, thank you so much.
Councillor Burkle.
Mr. Crow, will residents be able to come to this committee to get information on what they can do in their yards or bring bee hives in and such?
The committee itself doesn't have to serve as that component council member, that said, there are plenty of partners that the city does have that might be able to have some more information that I'm sure the city could help connect those residents to.
Thank you.
Oh, councillor Hamilton.
Hi, thank you, I appreciate your presentation, I think that the community engagement and educational opportunities are big here, I liked the partnership with school districts and nonprofits, I think that working that together in this really aligns with who we are as a city, it aligns with the green infrastructure parts of our comp plan and I think the Parks Board should be a fundamental piece of that committee's structure if I can get my opinion there, but otherwise, that's all I got.
Councillor Davis.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Protem, I am in support, like my colleague, I am not a scientist, I do like the outdoors but I'm not a scientist but I have heard enough that you know attracting bees and pollinators is an important part of our ecosystem, so I'm in support of this, do we get any ongoing like support from the Xerxes Society, I'm mostly looking at like, I know it's not a huge sum but like the $200 a year, does that cover some of their administrative stuff, like what what support and relationship do we have with them throughout the year?
The work with the relationship is primarily information-based, so providing us access to research and data and tools that could be utilized by the city and the city partners to help spread the message across the community, the $200 fee I imagine goes towards their operating
Sure, okay, okay, but we're getting some, we have access to their database and their knowledge throughout the year in exchange for that, so that
If that were a route that council wanted to go, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
In talking with the Parks Board, do you think you have enough commitment from people that want to be involved with this?
Anecdotally I would say yes, there's definitely some engagement there, we did provide this presentation to Parks Board last month and had this conversation and they were definitely interested in learning more about it and were they're anxious to hear what your considerations and thoughts are.
Okay, all right, so council I think we just, oh I'm sorry, councillor Wells.
No, I'm in total support of turning around and putting this program into effect in Ridgefield so that we would be another Bee City in Clark County and it's very, very beneficial, a lot of people don't realize how beneficial bees are, especially if you've got plum trees and apple trees and different things like that and if you don't get the bees you don't get the plums and apples, so it's a sideline benefit for a small contribution and get the awareness of the people of how beneficial they are.
So I think what he's looking for from us is just a thumbs up, thumbs down, are we in favor of him moving forward with that or?
Absolutely, just a little bit of feedback or direction, we can, we'll be sure to do some research on the staff side and provide more information.
You get two thumbs up from councillor Wells, so hey, go for it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you Mr. Crownheart.
Thank you Mayor Protem, thank you council.
This time we're gonna move into our business and Mr. Johnson, we're gonna go forward with the second reading of ordinance number 1459.
Thank you Mayor Protem and council and interested citizens, so we have talked about this particular subject a couple of different times, we had a study session back on September 18th and first reading at the council meeting on September 25th, in the 2025 legislative session, the legislature approved House Bill 2015 which gives a couple of different options for funding public safety, a very broad range of public safety expenses and with that there's a grant program and the 0.1% sales tax that council can approve, what we're talking about today is a second reading of a potential adoption of the public safety sales tax at that 0.1%, staff had again presented this a couple of different times, there were a couple of questions that how could we use the funding specifically in our 2026 budget and what we talked about at both the Budget Advisory Committee and previously with council is using the funding for the grant match portion of the personnel expense pending we do get the grant, that's going to be available later this year so we will apply for that, the outfitting of officer equipment which the personnel expense grant matches over 73,000, the outfitting including vehicles is 247,000, then there's radio replacement, that was one of the items we talked about in the 2026 budget for a three-year plan since our radios are no longer supported, so if they break you know we have to replace them at that point, at 70,000 additional training, the chief and lieutenant did provide a training plan for 2026, so that would cover the training plan as well and then any increased contract cost in the body worn camera program which you saw earlier today, the estimate for funding at this point is 442,000, there was a question at the advisory committee, what if it doesn't come in at that high, then we would scale this accordingly and/or come back to council, we could use reserves as well to fund what we talked about, but that does give the ability as a sales tax rather than other funding options, it is paid by anybody who shops within the Ridgefield area, so if people are coming in from outside of Ridgefield shopping at Costco, In-N-Out, something like that, they're also paying that sales tax and helping pay for the public safety that they also use as they're visiting our city, so with that, we've already seen the presentations, talked about this a few times, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Councillor Favella.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I'm in full support of this, the sales tax and the grant going through, I think what I'm kind of struggling with is as we go through budget season, we're also talking about doing some cuts as well for many different departments including PD, so if this sales tax goes into effect, if we do it now, it goes into effect January, there's gonna be a lag time because it is only quarterly that Department of Revenue will send us funds, correct?
Not entirely, so there's a two-month lag, so the sales tax, if we turn this in, let's say that council did adopt, we have to turn it in by October 18th at the latest, so our goal would be to send it in earlier, early next week, we have a 75-day lag, then they can put it in place as of January 1st, January and February we would start to receive January and February, we would start to receive that money in March. And then every two, then we would get it every single month, but it's always from two months previous.
So it's the lag, if we go into budget and we do cuts, my concern is that, that lag time period of a time of need that we, the department may need those funds versus the time that the funds are coming in. So would we be able to dip into reserves and then use that money to replenish so that they're not going without, period?
So there's a couple of answers to the lag. As far as the reserves, yes, that's what we do have reserves. We have a revenue stabilization reserve and we have an operations and maintenance reserve. That's what that's for, is because of the cyclical nature of some of our revenue sources, we use those reserves, then replenish it as it comes in, especially if there's that lag of two months. The other piece to this is, the reality is, this is two positions that are full year, starting January 1st, we're not going to be able to hire them on January 1st.
Right.
So there's going to be a time period there where there's some savings through the salary savings that we won't need that. So we probably will start to see the revenue coming in prior to that.
Okay, great. I think I just want to be clear that there, if there is a need, that that need will be met regardless of when that money is actually coming to us.
Yeah, we would not delay the process of starting the hiring process and going out and, and doing what they have to do through civil service. We begin that, and we, we would probably even come to you later on in the budget process and ask to start that as early as possible. So the reserves will cover that lag in that, so that we can get going right away. Because there is a need for the community and the people who have not heard this yet. Washington is the state that has the lowest officer-to-citizen ratio in the state. Ridgefield's even below what Washington is. This will bring us much closer to what the, the number is for Washington.
Yeah, I want our, our officers, our department to know that they are fully supported and making sure that they are not going to go without. It also taps into morale, too. So just ensuring that they're good and they don't have to worry about, you know, going without.
Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Megan, all right. I'm sorry, Council Hamilton.
Sorry, I don't know if I should just speak up or show my face or what. I'm trying, this is my first zoom in. Okay, so just on that note, my, the note that I made that I just wanted to make sure I said today was that I want to be careful that we don't restrict ourselves too narrowly before we start to collect funds, as far as the language of like, how we're spending. So I'd like the language to ensure that money goes to public safety, obviously, but that there's flexibility for Council and staff to determine specific uses in each budget cycle based on specific current priorities and needs for the state of Ridgefield, city of Ridgefield and that state.
And one thing that I'll bring up on that is, Council does set the budget every year. So they're setting what the levels of, whether it's public safety, parks, streets, whatever it may be, you have that flexibility every year. So if, if, for instance, you just adopted this as a public safety tax as presented, you have that ability every year to make that decision of how you want to use that.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Okay. We also have received correspondence from some citizens that are very much in favor of this, Mr. Johnson. So I think, okay. Julie, would you read the ordinance into the record, please?
Thank you. Ordinance number 1459, ordinance of the city of Ridgefield, Washington, enacting an additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% is authorized in Section 201, Chapter 350, laws of Washington 2025, for criminal justice purposes, adding a Chapter 3.12 Criminal Justice Sales and Use Tax to the Ridgefield Municipal Code.
Okay, I would call for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 1459 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Julie, will you call for the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Favela?
Yes.
Councilmember Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Burkle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the first reading of ordinance number 1461, which is amendments to RMC Chapter 504, Business License and Regulations. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. So what we're bringing to you today is a change to the model language that was, again, approved by the legislature this year. Back in 2018, the city went with the business licensing service through the Department of Revenue. That was a requirement that had been approved back then, that eventually every city and location that does business licenses would have to move to one of two different versions so that it made it more efficient for businesses to get their business licenses. They have a new requirement to change the threshold for businesses that are not physically located within Ridgefield or whatever location they're going to. So for instance, if a business that's physically located in Vancouver comes to Ridgefield to do some business, there's a minimum threshold of work they need to do to be required to get that business license. So in the past, when this was first approved by the legislature, it was $2,000 gross revenue per year in that location. So that business would have to come into Ridgefield and do at least $2,000 worth of business to have to get a license. So what the legislature is doing or requiring us to do at this point is increase that to $4,000 effective January 1st. And then every four years, there will be a CPI indexing that will increase that threshold as well. So what they are asking every location that does business licenses is to approve that model threshold increase and then move forward and then provide that to them. Similar to the previous ordinance we talked about, this does have a 75-day notification period as well. So we would have to notify the Department of Revenue by October 18th to make sure that they get our changes in our code so that they can make changes to their website when people go in or businesses go in to either get their initial business license and/or renew their license. And with that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Council, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Wells, do you want to make a motion?
No, Wells, just she has to read the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Julie, will you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1461, ordinance of the city of Ridgefield, Washington, amending Chapter 5.04 Business Licenses and Regulations of the Ridgefield Municipal Code to bring the business license provisions into confirmation with the statewide model ordinance required by Chapter 35.90 RCW.
Thank you. Mr. Wells.
Okay, I'd like to move to approve the ordinance number 1461 in dispense of the second reading.
Second.
So Julie, do you want to call a roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Favela?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Yes. Okay, so we wave the second reading and pass it. Thank you. So now we're going to enter into public hearings. The public hearing is now open. If you signed up with the city clerk before the meeting, I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
1462.
Oh, I missed 1462. I'm so sorry. Sorry, Kathy, we've got one more here.
Oh, you got one more?
Okay, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1462.
No, 1462.
1460. I don't have 1460 on my record here. MAJ Boschma, RMU of Zone Change. Okay, Ms. Lust, and she's online, she's going to share this with us. Here she is.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Good evening to members of the public. Mayor Protem, can you just shoot me a thumbs up if y'all can hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Perfect, thank you so much. So the agenda item before you this evening for public hearing is a requested zone change to add a mixed-use overlay to three parcels on the east side of the I-5 junction, known as the Mudge-Boschma site. A quick note on process, this is a meeting for presentation, discussion, and public hearing. No action is requested at this date. It'll come back to you. So as you can see on the map before you, the location of the site, which is about nine and a quarter acres, is on the east side of the I-5 junction. It's right adjacent to North 65th Avenue. And for some context, and to place lists amongst some recognizable landmarks, it is just across the street from the Clark Kellits Fire Rescue Station. To the southwest is the new Clark College at Boschma Farms Advanced Manufacturing Center. And to the east is the site of the future new elementary school. All right, next slide, please. So the proposal brought forth is a zone change to add the Ridgefield mixed-use overlay to these three parcels, which are currently zoned commercial regional business. The effect of that zone change would be to allow residential uses on the site. So under the current zoning, the only complete uses are allowed. This would allow a mix of commercial and residential uses. In fact, it would require a mix at roughly a 50/50 split. Next slide, please. To place this request in some of our long-range planning context, I'll actually start with the image on the right side of the slide. This is from the 2016 Ridgefield Junction Subarea Plan, which was adopted as part of our previous comp plan update. It's a lot, lot going on on this image, but the box outlined in black is the site. And what's shown there with the red with yellow stripes is basically what's being requested. It's a commercial zoning that also allows high-density residential. And then on the left-hand side of this slide is an image that should be near and dear to our council. This is from the council's preferred land use alternative for envisioned Ridgefield 2045, our 20-year growth management plan update. As indicated by the red dot, this site is in the midst of an area labeled five on this map, which council is looking at as a mixed-use center, generally centered around that Clark College site on the east side of the junction. All right, so the request before you this evening is for the zone change only. It is not a development application. If a zone change is approved, then the applicant would subsequently be required to go through a master planning process for any development on the site under that mixed-use overlay. However, as a means to illustrate what could potentially be developed under a mixed-use overlay on the site, the council did submit a concept plan, which is shown on the next slide, I believe. There you go, this concept plan, again, at 65th Avenue on the west. So the northern portion of the concept plan is residential and the southern portion of the concept plan is commercial. What's shown here is a 101-room hotel, two 6,100-square-foot multi-tenant retail buildings, and 142 residential units with associated community building, pool, play area, and dog park. Again, this is conceptual, this is not the subject of the application, but it does illustrate a potential outcome of the application. All right, the applicant, in their narrative, which is attached as an exhibit, along with a traffic impact study and market and land needs analysis that the applicant submitted, has made a narrative around how this application would meet the existing 2016 to 2035 comp plan goals and policies, which is the substantive approval criteria for a zone change in the development code. So the applicant's provided responses to a number of land use, housing, economic development policies in, in the existing comp plan and illustrated how this would support those policies as well as support council's ongoing vision for this mixed-use center. The applicant has also acknowledged the possibility in the narrative of concomitant rezone agreement being required for this project, as it has been for two recent zone change requests to add the mixed-use overlay. They have noted a couple of things in this preliminary acknowledgement and request for the rezone agreement, one of which being an inclusion of affordable housing at 80% and 60% AMI at a similar rate to what council has approved in previous rezone agreements. And then another component of what would be the applicant's request in an agreement would be a five-year deferral of the commercial component in favor of developing the residential component first. All right. Procedurally, this is a legislative review process, which means that this first went to Planning Commission for a public hearing and recommendation to council. That was last week on October 1st. Planning Commission had a good review and conversation, held a public hearing, four people testified. Two of the folks that testified were in support on behalf of the applicant, two were close by neighbors, one north on 65th, one in the McCormick Creek neighborhood, whose comments are detailed in the staff report, but generally had concerns about traffic circulation and integration of this project with surrounding properties and surrounding uses. So with that, go ahead and turn it back to you, Mayor Protem, for any initial discussions or questions for me before moving into the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Lust?
I do.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Burkle down here.
Ms. Lust, the two buildings on 65th Street in front of the residential, are those apartments or would those two be commercial as well?
Thank you, Councilor Burkle. So along 65th, there, the northern half of the site along the street in the concept plan is shown as residential. The southern half of the site along the street is shown as commercial.
Thank you.
Okay. Council Wells, do you have?
Yes, I'm going to throw my water on this one. And I would like to see us, when the ordinance is adopted down the road, that with a mixed-use overlay, we can have 40% to 65% of the site required to have commercial businesses. I would like to see changed that to 60% to 65%. Commercial businesses provide revenue for the city, apartments don't. Apartments on this site would be beneficial for Clark College. I'm, I'm not against that, but I hate seeing all of our sites turned into housing, which we have a housing problem with educating kits. So if we could keep the, put sideboards on it and keep it 60% to 65% on commercial, then that would help alleviate the school problem and help the Mr. Kirk's revenue problem. So that's my, that's, that's my personal opinion.
Something to consider, yeah, okay, all right. Council Favela?
Yeah, I, I think my biggest concern with this big of a project is looking at North 65th Avenue. We have the fire department that's right across the street. We already have talks of getting a fire station on this side of the freeway because the, the times that it takes the fire department to come over this way or, you know, for first responders in general to get through that amount of traffic is a concern. So could we have the developer work from the inside out versus outside in so that we're not stopping traffic on North 65th? And we have the elementary school coming in, there's already so much traffic going that way, and then the fire department right there. I am just concerned about how that's all going to work out.
Council Davis, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lust, go ahead.
My apologies. I was just gonna note that that is certainly something that could be considered as part of a rezone agreement.
Thanks. No, I like the concept of this space being mixed-use and having residential, which I think is the specific intention of the action, or lack, not action, but, you know, the intention of what we're supposed to be looking at today. So, I'm in support. You know, I definitely will look forward to having some of those conversations about how we manage some of the infrastructure pieces and the balance between retail and residential. I've heard some really good things about being able to be a partner with housing affordability and things like that. But I believe that this specific parcel and the parcels around it are ripe for some mixed-use concepts. And so, I'm generally in favor of, you know, granting a mixed-use overlay and just continuing that conversation.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Davis. Before we open the public hearing, is there anyone here that represents the applicant that would like to speak to this request? Would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, council members. My name is Mike Odrin. I'm a landscape architect and land use planner with McKay Spizito, representing the applicant today. And I'd like to speak to some of those items that you've just brought up recently. Regarding the two buildings that were along the north side of 65th, those are residential buildings, but those are gonna be live-work buildings. Those are two aspects that the developer has come up with in order to provide for a different type of both commercial and residential use. This is similar to what is taking place at Royal Ridge presently, and will kind of integrate that commercial mix with the residential mix as well. Regarding the Counsel Wells's concern about the potential loss of commercial land, I did a little bit of calculation, and of the 77, roughly 77 acres, undeveloped acres, commercial acres around this area, not including Clark College, this 9.09 roughly acre section represents about 11.7% of the total commercial area in that area, not to mention all of the employment zone parcels to the north and to the east. The residential part of this, of that 77 acres, comes out to be about 5.3 acres, or about less than 7% of that total commercial area around that area. So, really, when you take a look at the whole, the residential component is just a small percentage, almost a de minimis amount of the entirety of the existing commercial area that is around there. And again, that's not including the Clark College portion. Fire access, you were talking about the fire, oh, working from the inside out. Yes, we could certainly look at phasing the project so that it is constructed. Oftentimes, we want to start with the community building, because we want the amenities there for the residents themselves. So, that's really one of the first phases that would go. But we could absolutely look at starting with that and then working from the back forward, so that we have residents living in. Now, there's a little bit of a challenge with that, is that we don't want people driving through active construction zones in order to get to the residents. So, there is a little bit of a challenge there that could be discussed with staff as far as something that would, you know, allay any concerns about traffic concerns and things like that along 65th. The record has shown that, and again, I want to reiterate this more for the public, because you have the record, is that our traffic study, trip generation study, has shown that there will be fewer trips associated with this project, with the residential component, than if it were to be built out wholly as a residential component as well. We've also responded, I believe, to all of the Planning Commission's concerns. And I am available for any other questions. I'm not sure if there's any interaction between the applicant's proponent and council. Most of the time, there isn't, but I am available for any additional questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we are now going to hold a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. If you signed up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called, and you will receive permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you did not sign up in advance and would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you are joining by phone, press nine to raise your hand and six to mute or unmute. The city clerk will give you permission to speak. When speaking, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. There will be no back-and-forth discussion with the city council.
Thank you. I didn't expect to speak. I never do.
But we love it when you do.
Yeah. As far as the bee city, I want you to...
This is regarding, this is a public hearing for this topic, and then we'll have public comment, so this, sorry.
I'll wait.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Anyone have anything to talk about with the public hearing on this subject? Okay, then, Joher, anyone else likes to speak? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, now, we're gonna open for public comment.
Sorry about that.
Anyone wishing to address the city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing can now speak. Go ahead, Kathy.
As far as the bee city, I want you to think about not just pollinators, but also what they bring. They feed the birds, they feed the moths, the butterflies, the hummingbirds. And I think we tend, when we think of bees, we tend to think of honeybees. Pollinators are actually native. The honeybees are not native to our area. And in fact, sometimes, if there's a lot of them, they decimate the native, the plants that are there, that the natives would be eating. So, if you want more birds, you know, the birds eat the bugs. It's all a circle.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Chief Jackson, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protam, members of council. I just wanted to provide a couple of quick updates from the fire district. For one, as you know, our residents passed the EMS levy across the district some time ago. We have now been working and we're completing field training for our last round of paramedics. And all of our employees on the front line are EMTs, but paramedics provide an advanced level of care. Prior to the EMS levy, we were staffing our units at about 50% of the time, we would have a paramedic. So, we staff seven frontline emergency response units. And with that, we have a few that are finishing their field training, but even prior to them hitting the streets right now, up through the end of August, we were over 98%. If you look at seven units in the district 24 hours a day, 98% of the time, we were having an ALS response for those units, looking at targeting to have somebody at that advanced level on every unit all of the time. So, we're pleased with that, and that has certainly impacted our response stuff. Other pieces with response, the district is working to finalize information that we have recently obtained from a study to finalize land selection and procurement of land for the West Ridgefield Station that will be built in the future. So, we are moving forward with that, and we'll have some information on that in the near future. Last piece is with my division specifically, our acute behavioral health response unit that is collaboration, kind of regionally. Right now, it responds in our area, Fire District Six and Fire District Three, for acute behavioral health needs. And that is in collaboration with our behavioral health administrative services organization, Carillon, in the case of our region, as well as the state healthcare authority. So, as of October 1st, we increased that unit to 24/7 coverage. And on the first day, it was interesting, they actually ran 11 calls in their first 24-hour period, making it the busiest unit in our district. So, certainly, there is a need there. And we also received our credentialing from the state to make it an endorsed team in that capacity from the state healthcare authority. So, we received that credential on October 1st, and then are credentialed with Carillon to be essentially a long-term contractor for that service. Just wanted to provide those updates.
Great news, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move to our council and presiding officer staff reports. Counsel, we'll start with you, Counselor Burkle.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting, had a wonderful weekend with Bluegrass and Bird Festival in Ridgefield, always a great event, a lot of people in town, and all of them really, really appreciate what we do here in Ridgefield. I'd also like to comment on, those of you that haven't been through downtown, you might take a look at all the trees that are lit up pink to honor breast cancer awareness. Very, very nicely done. Attended a port meeting today, or yesterday, and just a few things. They continue to take care of the polluted yards along the exit route from the waterfront. They are almost done with 11 of them. And they're also looking at moving forward on their Oak Ridge development, which could include a 20,000-square-foot new building. And one last comment, last comment, Saturday is Green Bag. Any of those of you not part of Green Bag would like to leave a bag of food out, or bring it to right here Saturday morning. The need is great. We take care of both neighbors helping neighbors and the school resource center. So, anyway, Green Bag this Saturday, think about it. We could sure use the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Wells.
I was very interactive the last couple of weeks, busier than I'll get out personally, not for myself, but for my wife. And I did attend a briefing, and I did pretend to open house at Paradise Point a week ago on Saturday. There was a lot of participants, a lot of people showed up there. And three different home builders put on presentations and a lot of good food.
Great, thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Favela.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Ridgefield Police Department and Officer Duback for those amazing patches. She did a wonderful job. And echoing the sentiments on the pink recycling can, I have one. It's my favorite, and I love recycling day where I can have my little pink garbage can out front. I attended a fire commission meeting. Chief Jackson did a great job doing updates. He also presented me with a challenge coin, and it was a really sweet honor. And thank you so much for that challenge coin. It was beautifully designed as well. And that's really all I got. Thank you.
Counsel Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. I would say that the thing that definitely stands out for me the last couple of weeks since our last meeting was actually last night, I got the privilege to attend, as well as present an award at the Clark County Disability Employment Awards at Clark College. It was, it was an event I've participated in or attended in the past, just celebrating both companies and individuals that have, you know, developmental and intellectual disabilities, and the pride and satisfaction that they bring to the workforce. And so, it's just a really inspiring event. And I was really humbled to be asked to present an award last night. And so, that's such important work that's close to my heart, and so, it was, it was just an honor to be involved.
Congratulations, that sounds great. Counselor Hamilton.
Hey, thank you. So, as you can see, I am in a hotel room, because I'm currently at the Places Conference, which is an annual state-wide conference. I'm here in support of partnership with Ridgefield Main Street, but it's all these different, you know, downtown districts coming together, talking about the way that we revitalize and we keep our downtowns thriving. So, that's been a really cool experience. I can't wait to tell you guys more when I get back. I also attended a chamber meeting. There was, I think, close to 70 businesses there. And the question that was posed was, where do you want to, what do you want to see in Ridgefield in the next five years? And I mentioned that I would love to see more participation in our city council meetings from the public and the engagement piece there, and how people can get involved. And then, our city manager, Mr. Stewart, did a fantastic presentation, just so well-spoken, and I just love the messaging that we can get out when we hit groups like that. But they all, I mean, I would say 70% of people are talking about the community and recreation center, so it was nice to be able to give some information on anticipating that. I've had quite a few youth commission meetings, too, between you, actual, like, on the Clark County Youth Commission, someone that's currently there, one of the original members there, administrators from the View Ridge staff, Counsel Favela and I went and spoke to some of the fire cadets. So, it's just, that's been really fun to start to engage that, that commission. And then, besides Ridgefield Main Street Board Meeting, I was one of the people that did a couple of those trees with the pink lights. I feel, felt very outdoorsy. But I think that's about it, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to you, Mr. Stewart. I didn't even write any notes about myself. I don't know. I've been, I, actually, I was kind of pretty sick with this cough and kind of some pneumonia the last couple of weeks, so I didn't do a whole lot with meetings, but, yeah. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, members of the council and the community. Just a couple of brief updates. First of all, and both of them, and Mr. Crownheart will be proud of me, they both have to do with parks and recreation.
Okay.
So, the two updates, first one is just a reminder that next Wednesday, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Boyce Park Phase One Pump Track will be opened to the public, and we'll be doing a great ribbon cutting for that. Already coming along, looking great. Our Capitol team has been doing a wonderful job working with Mr. Crownheart to actually put this all together and get it ready. And this is a great, this is a segue to the second, Parks and Recreation piece, is that in a single day, there were a lot of moths to flame of children finding places to play. And Boyce Pump Track was one of those, where before it was even open, there were about a half dozen teens who found it and were already trying it out. And I had a great conversation with them. The one miss on my part with it, great conversation, did let them know, like, it's not quite open yet, so please, like, don't hurt yourself on that. But also, wonderful teenagers who had lots to say, great insights, and I left, thanked them all, said bye, and I didn't give them a card for the youth commission to have them apply for it. Luckily, we did tell them about next Wednesday, so I hope to see them then, and we'll make sure that we get the information. I know Mr. Crownheart will have information about our youth commission there. We will have professional BMX riders that, Orb, our local bicycle shop, will be bringing a show off how to use a pump track in a very professional fashion. And we will have ice cream and hot chocolate for the kids and for us, as well from Acow Creamery, our local ice cream shop. So, should be a great time on that. And the point being, as far as the kids being out there, is that was the second of two places that I got to see kids find a place to play without any real advertising associated with that. And that's, the second was the Splash Pad. And while the Splash Pad has been an incredibly difficult, trying project and process for this council, for our community, for the staff, that have spent hundreds of hours trying to get it up and operational, the community is currently operating the test drive of the Splash Pad. It has been going very well. The levels of chlorination that are necessary to keep everything working appropriately have been happening in the way that they should. The pumps are operating at the levels that they should. The reservoir is holding the water as it should. Questions have been raised about how much water is actually used by the Splash Pad, concerns about are we wasting water associated with that? One of the big aspects of this Splash Pad that differentiates it from other Splash Pads, including the centers, is that this is not a freshwater system. This is a recirculated water system to conserve water and not just keep using freshwater that dumps off into our storm systems. So, it is why it's more complex. It's one of the reasons why, and it's because it's more like a pool than it is like a fountain that just has water flowing through it. We've been doing that test drive now for about a week. It's been going great. And during the warmer days earlier this week, it was fun to watch a lot of kids enjoying their time playing in it. And that's been a long time coming, and I know council was, was very glad to see that, and certainly so were we. So, we look forward to the next steps, and that is making sure that the legal liability associated with the work that's been done and the costs associated with that are borne by the contractors who did the work and need to be held accountable for that. And we'll be looking at ways to make sure that when the permit period ends on October 30th, that from then until when the Health Department allows us... 30th, that from then until when the health department allows us to open it back up at the beginning of May of next year, that we're doing everything to assure that that grand opening is everything it should be and that the county, the council and the community have expected. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And when you said the word water, it reminded me of one thing I wanted to say. So again, one of the things that I have gotten the most questions about from the public is about our water supply and are we going to have more water available next year? So, and I tell people that, and I have told people that I thought we were going to have another well in place by next year. And I don't know now that that's actually true, but I'm hoping that it is. And if there's any possible way that we do have more water supply available by next year, I hope we make it happen because people are very, very concerned about that. And I think people that are wanting to buy houses here are even very concerned about that because they hear that there's a shortage of water out here that there could be. So just...
It is a great segue to the next presenter who actually has an update on that as part of his presentation.
So Mr. Thammack, please. Give me some good news.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, I have a couple, we have a couple of updates from Public Works, but I will start with the water conservation strategy and the social media posts that went out today highlighting the infrastructure projects that we are working on with our utilities team and our Capitol Projects teams. A couple of those projects are an intertie that I'll be doing a presentation with you next week. And that project, we're hoping to kick off by the first of the year. And the other big, big project that we're gonna be going to bid before the beginning of the year is our East Side Reservoir, two and a half million gallon reservoir, which is larger than all of our other current reservoirs combined currently. So a very big project for us. And then the third is our Kennedy Well. And that, we are actively looking at how we can expedite the process and how we can start some preliminary design work prior to securing and having approval from Department of Ecology so that when we get that approval, we can be very close to construction.
That is great news. That is great news. Thank you so much. Yeah.
And so for our second update tonight, I'm gonna turn it over to our Deputy Public Works Director, Miranda Lang.
Okay.
Thank you and good evening. So I wanted to give you a quick update on the Pioneer Widening Project. I know everybody has been seeing things happen, like in real time, we got the top lift of paving placed, so that is done. We also started striping, so the finishing touches are starting to come together on it. We do still have a lot of work to do, such as finishing striping, lighting. Lighting is coming very, very soon, within the next couple of weeks as well. So as soon as we get that done, PUD can flip the switch for us and we can have lights illuminating the corridor as well. We've got a lot of planting going on between our multimodal path. I told, did tell Cory I would mention our trail that is going along there as well. So we'll have a lot of plantings going on, driveways being poured, lots of finishing touches happening. So we're getting there. Thank you so much for everyone's patience and tolerance for the project. We know it hasn't been easy and we do appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Dent.
Yeah, that actually reminds me, so as I was coming back from Costco today and I took around to, is it Discovery Drive? That, where the new traffic circle is?
Yes.
So there is, as you're approaching the new traffic circle, a stop sign that's there. Is that gonna stay? Because I don't recall us having stop signs approaching other traffic circles, right? Is it still like a yield?
Yeah, typically, it's a yield sign. I'm guessing, I'll have to double check on that. I'm guessing it is solely there just for construction.
Okay.
So I'll double check and let you know.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Yes. Counselor Burkle.
One quick question. I noticed all the candlesticks that once delineated traffic into, in and out, are now gone.
Yes. They are. They will not be replaced. That was a temporary condition so that we could delineate traffic during construction.
All right. And then Ms...
And an infant shield.
Brian, just a, just a quick thank you for the board as you enter Ridgefield and Hillhurst, talking about water conservation.
Yeah.
I think that's gonna make a lot of people very, very happy.
Yeah.
May I follow up? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So was your question related more to how we were going to really illuminate that that is now a yield condition versus a dedicated right lane? Okay, yeah, so we're highlighting the existing yield signs that we have there, as well as we installed some portable message boards that indicate that there was a condition change at the roundabout. And we are reminding people that you do need to yield going in there. There is a slight learning curve that people are going to have to do again, but we're really trying to highlight. It's different.
Yes. Thank you.
Counselor Favella.
Yeah, is there a possibility of getting a flashing yield sign at that very specific entry point?
So we have talked about that. We are researching what our options are for a permanent condition.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I do not have anything else tonight, but would answer any questions.
I think we're good then. Thank you. Ms. Notenneris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Our recruitment period for the youth commission is open. Thank you all so much for your efforts in helping to recruit for us. If you need more cards, I brought them. Don't want you to, you know, be somewhere and not have the information to provide to students or parents. We have right now, I think probably 10 or 11 applications and we continue to get them daily. So I'm very encouraged that we will have quite a few. That recruitment stays open until the 20th. We also have recruitments open for other boards and commissions. We have vacancies on the Parks Board, the Planning Commission, the Roundabout Committee, and the Salary Commission. And those recruitments stay open until October 24th. And those, of course, those will, appointments will come to you in probably in November, early December. I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lust.
Thank you again. I am also remoting in from a hotel room, hence the horrific lighting situation, but I am currently at the Washington American Planning Association Conference, hearing a lot of great things from people doing awesome work. Something today stood out to me that I think council will appreciate. It was in a session where the presenters were planners from Fort Angeles and Paulsboro, which are similar sized cities to Ridgefield. And one of them commented on punching above their weight in terms of the work their city is doing. And, you know, having that small-town character be so important to who they are, but not a limiting factor in their just hard work and creativity and big ideas. And it really struck me that, yeah, you could say that about Ridgefield too. And I think that's something to be proud of. And I think council definitely plays a big role in creating an environment where that's possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Parker.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I don't have anything to report, but I did want you all to know that I have my very own bee suit and I actually have a few hives and we harvest our honey. So if you need any volunteers on your Bee City Initiative, I'm in.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, Chief Dorit.
I have nothing to add, Mayor Protem, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I think with that, then, this meeting is adjourned.